Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for February 4, 2013. This is a meeting of the Vision Fund Committee. First order of business is roll call and determination of quorum. Charlene?
Sasso, Clayton, Nordstrom, Scott, Peterson, Doyle, Lewis, Roberts, Wright, Laurenti. We have quorum.
Thank you. And the procedure for the Vision Fund is that it is chaired by the city council president. I will, of course, remain present in the meeting, but she will be chairing the meeting. Before I turn the gavel over to her, I want to mention that we have a meeting coming up soon to give the community an update on the other Vision Fund projects that is tentatively been scheduled for Monday evening, March 25. The following items will be on that agenda for presentations. The first is, and this is in no particular order, downtown parking ramp, soccer, ATTA, the grounds over near the Journey Museum, public works, infrastructure, and streets, Founder's Park, pools, which there probably won't be much of an update on that since there will be an update tonight, and Canyon Lake, spillway, economic development, Mount Rushmore Road, ASA softball, mental health collaborative, Black Hills Vision Energy Plant, and Skyline Trails. And Charlene, do we know what time that meeting would be on Monday, March 25? Tentatively scheduled for 6:00. With that, I will turn the gavel over to council president Bonnie Peterson.
We have, the first item on the agenda is 50-meter pool, leisure pool, and fieldhouse funding schedule. Doug, did you have a presentation?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you, council, for taking some extra time this evening on a busy night to listen to our presentation. I'm going to go over a few of the original concepts, some of the time changes, or the money changes in our budget line, and also show how we want to go about these projects over the next three years. And after that, then I will answer any questions that you may have. The first thing I want to put up on the board is, this is the original concept. The concept A, that your council group from the Vision requested to have put onto the plan. And just to kind of give a little brief review of what was on this plan is, we have two slide out slides here. Those particular slides do not go into a pool, but they go into like a flow-out area of about six or seven inches of water. So it's a different type of concept thrill, slides that we are incorporating in this pool. We also have a lap lane pool here with a deep end on the end that will have a drop-off slide and a diving board, which will also be able to use for lap lane swimming. And then we have a more area of like three to four feet area of water right in this area. We have a zero-depth area that will also have a kid play structure area with a vortex pool, kind of like what we have at the swim center right now, and more two to five-foot water. This particular building is the concession shower room, maintenance building that is built in contour to the hill where our utility vehicles will be able to get into the maintenance part of this building and not be able to have to hoist pumps or anything out. So it'll be a really cool feature that could possibly be here. Now, these are all conceptual drawings, of course. I want you to know. When we get into design, they'll be more detailed, of course. And the one thing that we do want you to know with this whole design of all three of these projects is, we are not going to lose concept of what these pools are, the priority that the pools are being built, and we'll go into that more later. The other two projects that we're trying to talk about tonight is the 50-meter pool. The orientation of this is just how it's sitting. It would be south of the current swim center. This out here is a fence line, and obviously, this pool is outside. There is not, it is not enclosed. It can be, though. It will be designed to either be enclosed with some kind of a shell-type building or actual building itself. So when this pool's designed, this 50-meter pool, it will be built to allow for us to be able to enclose it at a future date. The community gym or fieldhouse is actually a smaller version than the original version that was proposed. This version is the original design that was actually built with the main pool and its original design and concept. That was about 10 or 11 years ago. This particular project, we had to make it smaller as far as design and cost to allow for some of the extra money that we feel that the pools are going to need to be built. The community gyms, though, will have two gyms, full-length gyms, with a walking track around the top. There'll be restrooms in the bottom. There's an area here for daily childcare, hourly childcare, as someone that would want to come work out or play. And then a few other meeting rooms to allow for arts and craft-type classes and those types of classes. This here is the new schedule that was cash flowed out by our finance office. And as you see, the oranges areas is what has been changed in how the money flow. The money hasn't been increased and hasn't been decreased, but we are showing all three projects being funded through this project. And I will show you more of a breakout of those here with this form. One of the things that we do realize is that the 50-meter pool is the first thing that needs to be built. We need to look at trying to get this design, get this going, and be in design phase between now and June, and begin construction, probably in July is what we'd like to do. Construction July through next June and hopefully be up and open by 2014 out there. So this year, Horseman, this could be the last year at Horseman, and we wouldn't lose a 50-meter pool at all in this transition. What would be nice about that is also while we are building the new Horseman or the new pool out to the south of the swim center, we could be designing Horseman Pool. So when it's shut down, the area, North Rapid already knows that the planning's going into the process. It's already being planned for, and we can be under construction in 2014 in January. And so goes for the fieldhouse part of it. What this three-year plan allows us to do is just continually build on all three of these projects. We feel, and our consultant feel, that with this schedule, we could probably get some better building contracts due to, a company might realize that they can be here for three years and have work done, and also with their design fees and that kind of stuff, that we have companies that can bid this and look at it almost as a three-year project, not just a one-year project. So we think that there's some cost savings there. Not guaranteed, but I think that's something that we really think is a high possibility for us to be able to do. We know that the 50-meter pool is the first priority to get going. We know the second thing is the leisure pool at Horseman. We know the fieldhouse has always been one of those projects that, well, if there's still money there, we can do it, but we don't want to jeopardize the two pools. And we honestly know that that's kind of the feeling of the community and of the leadership in Rapid City right now. And we're good with that because we feel that these numbers that are up in front of you give us a possibility of having all three projects completed and completed right and completed the way that we think it would be in priority with city recreation being accomplished, all the things that we want to accomplish with these projects, too. We wanted to keep the fieldhouse on the horizon. We know that that's probably the project that might lose out if we start running over some of these numbers, but we want to keep it there because we know how important it is to the recreation, park and recreation division to be able to have this building, this addition onto what our swim center is right now. So with that, is there any questions? I'd love to field some.
Does anyone have questions? Mr. Lewis?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the plan going forward. Entertain the floor.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate your bringing this forward. And this is, I think, from my perspective, I think it's a pretty good way of doing this. Obviously accomplishes our goals and allows minimal downtime for all the swimmers that are, and the people that use these facilities, and allows us to keep the people in North Rapid with a pool an extra year. So I would really appreciate that, and I think you've done a good job with it. So thanks for your hard work, and thanks, Jeff, and Kristy, and everybody else back there.
Ms. Scott?
Hi, Doug. So if I understand what you're presenting us today is that it's going to be a total of $10.6 million for all three projects. If we were to bid out all three projects, and it comes in at that 10.6, the company that's awarded it would have these costs basically bid out for all three projects?
Each one of the projects will be individual projects. We're just thinking that with how the plan is set up, that it will allow us to, or a company to think in the future, hey, I know that there's another pool coming, or I know that there's a recreation facility. They will not be bid out, three projects. I don't see that that's possible over a three-year span, but we just feel that there's, you know, the possibility of some cost savings here with them being designed this way where it's a design-build, and while the other one's being built, we're designing, going out for bids, they'll be able to look at that and know that, hey, our company could probably stay here for three years, and we think that there'd be some cost savings. But, yeah, they will be individual projects. They will not be all three bid at one time.
So based on our last Vision Fund, we already approved $5.1 million for the Horseman Pool, and now it's being backed off to 4.2. So what happens if we bid out the 50-meter pool, and instead of coming in at 3.1, it comes in at 4.2?
Okay. Like I said, these numbers are where we are feeling comfortable with our consultant. One of the things with, say, the 50-meter pool, some of the things that we had in there that, you know, are maybe possibly not in the particular design of what the feasibility study was, is we had like the cabanas and a lot of that fluff stuff on that side came out because we're just building the pool itself using the swim center as our amenity as far as our bathrooms and showers, houses, and stuff like that. So we feel that in the 50-meter design, we are really safe with those numbers. It's 4.6 for the leisure pool. It's part of that, 5 million was in design, too, so it's 4.6. And then 2.6 for the fieldhouse with design and construction. Like we said, these are the first things. We know the 50-meter pool is the first priority. If that goes over, we're going to have to adjust. We go do the next building, or the next one, which is the leisure pool design. If that's over, then we know the next thing we'll have to adjust. So we're bringing this forward with how we feel that it's going to be, but if it does, if we're short here, we're going to have to just keep going down the ladder, and we know that the fieldhouse would be the third thing that would have to sacrifice the money.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do recognize that it makes good business sense and for the community to do the 50-meter pool first, and then to do the Horseman Pool. And I do recognize that when we approved the $5.1 million for the Horseman Pool, it was still put out to 2015. This plan actually brings it up to construction in 2014, so it would be open in 2015 rather than under construction. I'm in favor of that. My concern is, is with the way things are going, I'm not so sure we'll ever get to the fieldhouse design. And the other thing is, is I want to make sure that the people of Ward Four realize that there is still a commitment because, if I can ask Pauline, if my memory serves me correctly, Pauline, we've already approved the $5.1 million for the Horseman Pool, but we have not approved anything for the 50-meter pool to date, correct? Besides the original plan?
The original plan was still in the budget, but yes, the 5.1, you increased the budget for the Horseman Leisure Pool to 5.1 at the last meeting.
And before this recommendation, the 50-meter pool was still scheduled to be under construction in 2014, correct?
I'm going to pull up that schedule now. Yes, the 50-meter pool was at $2.125 million in 2014.
So this actually brings up both pools to more recent time, which I'm all in favor of. I am concerned that there were some promises to Horseman that that pool would go next before the 50-meter pool. And like I said, I'm from Ward Four, but it does make better business sense to go ahead and do the 50-meter pool first. But we have to have assurances because the Ward Four or North Rapid people have been promised this pool for so long that nothing can interrupt this pool going. So I am in favor of this plan for the simple fact, it is bringing it up a year earlier under construction, and I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Laurenti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chad. I appreciate that. And Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to ask the finance officer a question as well.
Sure, Pauline.
I think we really need to keep her busy tonight. I just want to throw that out to everyone. Anyway, Pauline, if you can, we still have a gap in funded for just the two pools. Am I correct as I'm looking at this? The two pools are over $10 million, right? The 50-meter pool, whether it's indoor or outdoor, and the lap pool and leisure pool, we still have a gap in funded. Am I correct?
Not the way that the plan is showing now. The funding would all be there. If you look at this plan along with what is attached to the agenda, it shows that the funding is available if these costs are good, or if these estimated costs are good. We do have the funding.
Otherwise, we would have to go to the 2015 round to make up the gap. Is that correct?
That's a possibility. That's an option.
All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pauline, another question for you. Thank you. What's in red here, that is what's not designated, that's not there, or that is there, too, at this time, for the fieldhouse? It is?
That is actually there. What was attached to the agenda is actually the recommendation to shift the funding between the fieldhouse, the 50-meter pool, and the leisure pool. The funding in total for those three projects remain the same. It's just shifting what monies are going where and when.
So then it looks like if the 50-meter pool does come in over, which I'm thinking it probably will because we only have, what, 3.4 million in there allocated for it? And then can I ask you, Doug, why is there a difference of roughly $400,000 between the numbers we have and the 5.1 million we allocated for the Horseman Pool?
Yeah. What we have is the pool and the actual pool structures all stayed the same. Everything was the same. The thing that we're looking at doing is, it would be the northern part parking lot in this master plan here. Let me put it back on here. This part of the parking lot right here, that would be held back. For one thing, baseball season's going on up there, too, so we'd have to hold back a part, one of the parking lots in this design anyway, or they wouldn't have anywhere to park. So we're looking at holding this back, and this was like a $400,000 parking lot in some of the designs, and we would look, RJ and I went up there and actually looked at it. It's not in too bad a shape, but we'd also look at other forms of funding, either parking rec, CIP, or other things to help construct that as not part of this project. So that's where about $400,000 of the 5.1 that you guys designated went to, and would not affect any of the lower portion of this project, though.
It kind of concerns me that we're making changes on something that we already allocated the funds for, but I can understand why you're doing it on this plan that you brought forward. And I will support this plan if we get guarantees that the money for the fieldhouse will be used for Horseman if we need that money, and we're not going to make drastic cuts up there. Because if we start making drastic cuts for the pool at Horseman so we can cover the fieldhouse, I think that's a huge disservice for North Rapid. Go ahead, Doug.
Well, I would like to let you know that that will not happen. You guys obviously will make all the changes anyway. As far as funding goes, we can't do that if we got to come in and we're $500,000 short. We got to come before this board anyway to say, hey, we need $500,000. We're going to have to change this schedule up, so there's no way that we could hide it. We also know we've had enough meetings with North Rapid and heard their needs and their desires and everything that, I won't put my name to that, John, so.
I trust you very much.
I think that we have a good plan here, and I think we want to move forward on it and get the best recreation facilities for our citizens we possibly can.
And I do very much like the idea of bringing this forward a year earlier because I know a lot of people, everyone in North Rapid has been waiting many, many, many years for this project to come forward. So I will support this going down the line, though. If we do need to take that fieldhouse money to make Horseman the pool that it needs to be, I will definitely be supporting that. So thank you.
Thank you. Alder Woman Scott?
Thank you. I did not understand you were doing away with that parking lot. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion that the figures change and include that parking lot in the fund, so it is $5.1 million, so this project is complete. And I understand that you have to slide it off because of the baseball season, but I still think it needs to be part of this design, and when the baseball season's over, it can be done. Thank you, John.
Okay, we have a substitute motion amended. Okay, Oshmaker accepts that? Okay.
Thank you, Chad.
Right, that would change the numbers. Ms. Sumption?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I might, if it makes the council feel better, you could also, not that I want you to amend a motion again, but add to the motion that the requirement that if the funds are short for either of the pools, that the funding comes from the fieldhouse.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I'm in a very accepting mood tonight, so whatever we got to do to make it happen, whatever works.
Yeah, you can continue.
Well, I'm not amending my own, I can't amend my own motion.
Okay, Mr. Doyle?
RL, can you have more than one friendly amendment? I think that would be a first even for us.
Okay, let's review our.
All right, Madam Chair. Reel it in.
Here. Okay, we're going to reallocate the money for the three projects as designed, except we're putting back the $400,000 for the parking lot into the Horseman Pool, and that we will take money from the fieldhouse to make sure the other two projects work.
May I still have the floor?
Yes, you may. Thank you. Question for Doug, if I may?
You bet.
Doug, I'm curious, what would be easier to make up should that project fall short if we were to take the extra parking lot money out of the fieldhouse? Would that be easier to make up, or would it be easier to take it out of CIP as you were originally thinking?
Well, it'd probably be easier as far as the funds go to do it tonight.
Well, what I mean is the gap in the parking lot versus the gap in the fieldhouse funding. Which one would be easier to plug?
Well, our concept was is that we would be able to try and find funding for that parking lot at a later date. The parking lot that's up there is in fairly good shape, so we were thinking that, you know, that would be a good place to, if we were going to grab a little bit of money, that would be an area that we could do it. So I would say originally, I would say I would stay with what I said, that it'd be easier to take it out of the parking, but I understand what Ms. Scott is saying, that there was 5.1 already originally planned for it, so let's go ahead and take the $400,000 out of the fieldhouse at this time, and we'll press forward.
Just something for everybody to consider. I yield.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question will probably go to either Pauline or Terry, but I like the idea of, let's have a little more discussion about coming out of CIP. Pauline, can you address that part of that question? We can do that, can we not? If the parking lot money would come from CIP rather than out of the fieldhouse?
That project would be eligible for CIP funding, yes.
Thank you. The concern that I have is if we start robbing too much from the fieldhouse, in my mind, I think the fieldhouse is kind of the anchor at the end of everything that kind of, for me, makes everything gel. And that is where the real money is going to be, what do you call it, the recovery call? The recovery costs or, that's where the money is going to be really made up is in the field house. So I, I guess I would rather see the, the council do, or this committee allocate, uh, try to come up with the money out of the CIP funding rather than, uh, robbing out of the, uh, CIP, because I think Doug's made a good presentation here with all the numbers and in order, proper order, so, um, that's my concern is that, let's see if we can't find alternative, uh, resources rather than stealing from the field house. I'll yield the floor.
All right. Uh, thank you. Ms. Scott?
Thank you. Um, recognizing Alderman Nordstrom's concerns, I believe that this fund will have the 400,000 to be made up by the time we get to 2015. In 2011, sales tax came in over what was anticipated. In 2012, sales tax came in over what was anticipated. Um, with our current economy with the tourists and, uh, businesses that we've got, I'm anticipating that we'll probably by 2015 have that extra 400,000. I just want to make sure that we take these projects as Doug has illustrated tonight in order and make sure that there are no delays. And the field house is the third one, and it is the one that is out there the furthest, and I think we can find that extra funds. And I'd rather see the project for Horseman in totality in completion. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, I would just take a moment to, uh, point out that we're talking about a parking lot that's still going to be, uh, two or three years down the road, and so I think we could always revisit this next year or 15 months from now when we have a better idea where our funding is, and, and besides, there'd be a new council at that point too, so. Ms. Sumption?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the same lines of what Alderman Scott is talking about, um, we do have contingency monies still budgeted for 13, 14, and 15. We also are projecting currently in 2015 of having a cash balance of nearly $3 million if all the projects come in as, as budgeted, and so if the council chose, they could take 400,000 from that now and add it to the project for Horseman leisure pool, or we can wait and see how we could do later.
Alderman Lewis?
Call the question, please.
Okay, any objection to calling the question? Okay, if there's no objections, do we need, still need to vote? This, okay. Are those in favor of calling the question?
Bonnie, could you clarify?
We're just calling the question right now, just to vote on that. All in favor of calling the question? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, I'm going to ask Charlene to read back the motion as best, as best as she understands it.
You're all heart. The motion is to approve the funding schedule that's been presented. Hang on a second here. Did I get it all? With a friendly amendment. Hang on a second here. We have a couple of them. Highlighted them. I'm sorry. Friendly amendment to include the north parking lot, the 400,000 for the north parking lot. And then there was another, where's Doyle? Hang on a second here.
I think it was to get the money from the field house if needed to make sure.
From the field house.
The pools were, ensuring guaranteed those pools go in.
So you have to approve the project as presented, to, to amend it to include 400,000 for the parking lot, and amend it again, that if there's a shortfall, the funding is to come from the field house.
Okay, are there any questions about the motion? Okay, those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good news for Ward Four in Rapid City. And have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Okay. Are those in favor of adjourning? Those opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned.